November 13th, county may call order. We can teach them to believe in religion. It's not a time.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda will be approval from the October the 22nd meeting.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the minutes from the October 22nd meeting. Would the clerk please call roll?
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stike?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be approve the minutes from the November the 27th, November the first, 2018 special meeting.
And have you approved the minutes of the November first, 2018 special meeting?
It has been moved in second to approve the meeting, the minutes from the November the first special meeting. Would the clerk please call roll?
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stike?
Stike.
Adams?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be approve of the statement of bill's paid amount of
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the statement of bill's paid at 335,659,500.
Second. It has been moved in second to approve the statement of bill's paid. Would the clerk please call roll?
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stike?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be reading a proclamation. Proclamation of the city of Edwardsville, Kansas, where as November the 13th, 2018, is known as World Kindness Day, in which the city of Edwardsville recognizes the value of simple acts of kindness performed without prompting or reason, or how these acts are positively impact the performer, recipient, and onlooker of good deed. And whereas all citizens are encouraged to collectively act to reduce violence in our Kansas City metropolitan area by improving access to opportunities for success for more members of our communities. And whereas we strive for the public at large to have empathy in the process to bring hope where there is hopelessness and encourage community clergy members along with representatives from health, education, business, workforce development, quality housing, and other organizations to step up in a leadership capacity to take ownership for finding ways to reduce violence and provide hope and opportunity where it presently lacking. And whereas by expressing empathy, care, and concern, and reaching out to one another regardless of social or economic status, education, race, gender, origin, religious belief, age, lifestyle, or ability, we extend an opportunity for grace, dignity, and acceptance that might otherwise offer, might not be otherwise offered, excuse me. Whereas citizens are asked to participate in the kind behavior at any time, in any place, and for the unselfish purpose of spreading goodwill. Therefore, I John McTaggart, Mayor of the city of Edwardsville, Kansas, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim November the 13th, 2018, as World Kindness Day in Edwardsville, Kansas, and urge residents of Edwardsville and area communities to join us to recognize and perform acts of kindness. Okay. Next item will be requests or comments uncovered. Okay, there being none, but no go on to the next item on the agenda. Consider recommendations of approval from planning commission regarding preliminary plan and final plan for proposed expansion of fast mall facility at 9911 Wood End.
Mayor, I'll present this item for us this evening as Mr. McTaggart does not put this. Basically, as you've noted, this is a preliminary and final site plan. It's in relationship to the expansion of the fast mall facility that is at 9911 Wood End Road. They submitted on September 10th of this year, an application for a preliminary and final site plan. Basically, it covers the entire 54 acres that they have in place currently. The preliminary plan includes the construction of about 120,000 square foot expansion on the western side of their existing facility, and a second potential future expansion of about another 141,000 square feet, also on the west side, so up towards Bets Creek. We did review this through the DRC for the site plan. Comments were provided to the applicant. They responded on, they got those comments on October 3rd. Those then went before the planning commission on October 29th. The planning commission did recommend the approval of both the preliminary and final site plan with, in this case, on the final site plan, southern conditions. There is some exceptions also as it relates to drainage and landscaping, which also being recommended, which is on the second page of the staff letter that's presented to the planning commission. We do have with us tonight Austin Kirby, who is representing the Fast and All Company. They are the contractor developer, so to speak, on this property from Anchor Construction. So if there are questions, I'm sure Austin would be happy to answer those. I believe the sides will be happy to answer them. We will need two motions, one.
We will, that's what I was going to ask. We need two.
One to approve the preliminary plan, which, they've included in the preliminary plan their future building expansion. So when they come back next time for the next expansion, they will just go straight through the final site planning process and they'll have to do that part of it.
Thank you.
I would add, just as, it's kind of a side note, as part of this project, they will be before you probably in our meeting in December related to IRBs, which has been fairly typical on these. We, they will also be as part of that, expanding the trail system. So it will expand basically along Bets Creek and along the south side of their property, or, yeah, the south side of their property up against the river over to their, at the property line on the east side. So that part of the overall negotiations as far as this project goes, some more information on that. They had dedicated easements previously when they did, I guess, the third phase expansion, which is the tall, the tower portion that's there. So just as a side note.
Do we know how many potential jobs will bring additional?
I think it's fairly limited, five to 10 on this particular item. As I understand, most of it is going to be pallet, pallet system, pallet type systems for the larger items that they bring in. That will be part of the cost benefit report that will be done as it relates to the IRB.
Not that that's a, it's always possible to have a few more jobs.
Yeah, it will add some more jobs. Certainly will add some temporary construction jobs in the rubbish.
Right, right.
And Anchor has done all the work for Fast and All on all the other facilities. So you see, you receive the quality of their work out there that you see today.
Have they talked about, do they have other phases that are sketched in?
What about, I'm sorry?
Have they talked about a kind of timeframe?
No, to be quite honest, Dana, Mr. Brown's last name, who's their vice president of real estate, was actually surprised that they got to this point. They had done a preliminary plan back when they did the very first phase. So I think the first phase was around 200,000 or 150,000 square feet. Pretty quickly they added to that. They expected this piece wouldn't be coming for a number of more years. Just in general discussion, he would say he wouldn't be surprised if they didn't add that next phase within a five-year period. No guarantees, but based on their current growth. And this is really becoming major, you know, kind of their Midwest major hub for their products.
It's really good that we and they have thought this far ahead. Do a few more extensions.
And as you know, when they bought that property, they somewhat bought it intentionally, knowing that they would expand at some point. I think the change that they made, which is right, I think, the recommendation of Anchor, when they put in the, that sorting, automated sorting system, was to move that to the east side and build the conveyor system over, because there's that pipeline, you know, there's a hundred-foot easement through there, I think it is, because there's a high-pressure gas pipeline, so you can't really do anything with that. But they were able to put the system just across, which is his conveyor belt system, across that, which then gave them more warehouse expansion to the west. And ultimately, they intend to do two more of those automated pick systems on the east side.
On the motions, you need one for the preliminary and one for the final?
Yes, yeah. On the preliminary, just adopting the preliminary, and on the final, it will be with the conditions and exceptions.
That was going to be my next question, which one of the conditions? Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt the preliminary plan for 9911 Wood End Road. Second. It has been moved in second to approve the preliminary plan for fast mall facility 9911 Wood End Road. Would the clerk please call roll?
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stike?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I also make a motion to adopt the final plan for 9911 Wood End Road, fast mall location with the seven conditions recommended by planning conditions.
Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt, they approve the final plan for fast mall facility 9911 Wood End Road with the seven conditions listed. Would the clerk please call roll?
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stike?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is consider ordinance number 1013, granting a contract franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Edwardsville, Kansas, and prescribing to the terms of said contract franchise.
I'm going to do this one in conjunction with our senior attorney, who's done a great deal with the work on this. But we do have before us a request for a franchise from MCI Metro, which does businesses for Horizon Access Transmission Services. As you'll recall, a couple of meetings ago, we actually adopted two ordinances. One of those was setting the framework for our franchises. While we've had franchises for many, many, many years, for those that use the public rights away, we had never really codified that process. And so the senior attorney, having a lot of experience in this area, said, we need to have a codification. And so we put that in place. And then we also put in place the application fee that goes with these applications. And so now tonight, we actually have the application before you. They, again, are requesting we use our public rights of way for telecommunications purposes. We have the authority to man these staff to a certain point. There is a lot of federal regulation around telecommunications providers, et cetera. This is not a cell tower or a particular site. It's about the infrastructure that runs basically on the poles and in the ground in the right of way. So tonight you have an ordinance that would actually adopt a franchise agreement with MCI Metro, with MCI Metro Access Transmission Services doing businesses for Horizon Access Transmission Services. I do know that they are ready to move forward. They have, I guess, customers here within the city that they want to begin to serve. But obviously, they haven't had the franchise agreement in place first. With that, I will try to answer questions. Again, Ms. DeHaan has quite a bit more of the details on the contract, has worked with this company in the past in other cities, and basically handled the negotiations on this one. Again, a lot of it is, we have to be neutral. So we can't treat one franchise different than another franchise. So when it comes to telecommunications, as far as our franchise rates and some of those things, we have to be consistent. Today, we have one other franchise agreement with AT&amp;T. That's currently at the 3% franchise rate. Everything else we have is at 5%. We'll probably go back to AT&amp;T because their franchise has, has ended, basically. It's a year-to-year. And we're going to negotiate that one, and get it in the same kind of format, and we'll probably move these to the 5%, so it'll be consistent across the board with all of our franchises.
So is this one going to go in at three or five?
It will go in at three.
Okay, but 10?
But the way it was negotiated was, if any time our rates change and it's uniformed across the telecommunications providers, that this one will basically automatically increase to that rate. And I believe 5% is the maximum that can be charged statutorily, so.
Is there a timeline on that for the 5% or is that just for?
Well, it, I mean, unless statutory, unless there are statute changes that says something different than that, I would say that will be going forward. Quite honestly, if anything, it would be more likely we'll see lots of local control and the loss of franchise fees is probably the direction that both the state and federal government, you know, policymakers have been moving is away from local control, not giving us more control.
Lovely.
What's the 3% of, 3% of what?
Oh, it's gross revenues, and it's defined in here, but at least you probably are better at it.
Could be from their customers, from their, the 3% of their gross receipts that they make from their.
Well, I always put Verizon as somebody with a cellphone on their belt. I'm not putting Verizon, because they have the wiring buried in there. Now, what do they do, like, compared to Spectrum?
High, probably mainly high-speed communications. That's really what most oldies are going to. So they're connecting businesses into their, to their fiber network so that, because mainly it's not so much the phone call anymore, it's the transmission of that data across these kinds of services.
So, that kind of franchise in Edwardsville?
Yeah, I think through Time Warner, it's changed names, but I think the franchise is that now? I believe it's 5% on that one.
You know what the revenue is, what we make off of that, just out of curiosity?
About 37,000 a year for Time Warner.
Okay. So this would be about the same.
They're usually customer-based. I mean, if you're doing more commercial, it's probably going to be higher. The Time Warner's, you know, they're doing more residential services, so they may have more customers, but generally speaking, that rate that's charged is lower than you're going to have for, you know, your large corporate, because they're sending a lot of stuff. So they're all about speed and.
I just tried to satisfy my curiosity, you know, not knowing what it's all about. But I know my neighbor got Spectrum, which he put in his house, and it buried cable from Lake Forest across my creek bank. And I didn't understand what the deal was there, you know, they didn't have any kind of easements or anything. I just let them do it because I could get along with my neighbor, but I went out and pointed where the wire goes.
Yeah.
I said, you put it there. And they want to put it up here.
Right.
Neighborhood stuff. I mean, but then they brought it off the island, and they were so that wires don't get down there. It just kind of made me curious on when you're going to see ditch witches out here doing things, and, you know, who's going to be keeping an eye on what they're doing.
And this is all buried cable? This is not growing up on the.
Oh, that means you're going to.
Yeah, no, this is all your traditional telecommunications type of work. It's not into the small cell wireless at all. So this is a traditional telecommunications.
I guess you foresee that that's going to be done neatly and not just destroy things because I know they have a lot of issues over in Shawnee when they put Google in. I mean, they're tearing up sidewalks, and, I mean, they had things tore up pretty bad over there.
That's what we did in this franchise was to put more of those requirements and regulations in the franchise, so they know that they have that obligation, and then we have the ability to demand that of them. So that was one of the things we did in kind of updating the franchise agreements was to put all of that in our franchise.
I did agree with you much with that, but.
We still.
We really did.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but it still will require them, when they, when they come to do a project, just like the other two, is they still have to file a right-of-way permit with us? So we know when, where they're digging, and what they're doing, and, you know, making sure there's no conflicts that we're aware of. Obviously, they, they have to get all the lines marked with the other utilities and coordinate that. There's not a, you don't have an exclusive right to use in the right of way. So there could be.
Then how did they, they got the ditch witch, do they have to come down and get a business license?
Yep. That's what we, you know, that. Quite honestly, there's three or four of those companies that do this kind of work. So they're probably already all licensed and have a bond. I mean, you know, the city doesn't quote bonding, but they, they have to show proof of bonding, so that if we do have a problem, we can go back against them. Ms. Snyder and her able crew keeps a pretty close eye on these days, so she won't, I know she won't let them get out of control, so.
Will this have anything to do with our internet service providers that are available here in Edwardsville, and will this manage their residents at all?
As far as current providers? No. Addis Frac. It may, it may give them a future option in the future. Again, you used to have more regulatory control about being able to say you'll do this and this, about who you'll serve and when you'll serve, and those things. We've lost a lot of that, that control out there. But it's really about managing the right of way to ensure that when they go dig it up, that they kind of get the permit, that they're replaced, that they, you know, they go into our streets or break stuff or things like that, that those are that control. And they're using, you know, they're basically renting, they're renting the city's land, so to speak, right? So the intention of right of way is really for building of roads and sidewalks, though you have to put utilities somewhere. So they either go in the right of way, or they come in and they try to buy easements from all those properties that they want to go across. Well, then pre-seeing those tunnelers, like, okay, so I've got road, and then I got utilities for water company, and one for the sewer company, and one for the electric company, and one for the gas, you know, they don't want all those. And quite honestly, the utilities don't want to go out and negotiate with, you know, 100 properties to try to get from point A to point B. So they basically then rent the right of way for the use of their business. Of course, they're making profit from this business, and so that's kind of the basis of how the franchise fee is put into place.
I guess I'm asking too, and this might be obvious to everybody else, that the right of way belongs to the city, and I understand that, but it's still going to be kind of a pain for the people who live there, and so yours being dug up. So does it benefit them at all, other than just revenue coming to the city?
Not necessarily, unless, I mean, they're providing, end up providing services to those specific homes and lots, et cetera.
So they might have a residential benefit and not just commercial? There could be. I'm not exactly sure what their plan is in Edwardsville. And we can't specify, is what you're saying?
I mean, we can't say you'll do, I mean, I mean, I know what triggered this originally is, quite honestly, the cell tower that they have that was put up, and they need to connect that into their overall system. And to get from point A to point B, they, you know, they need to have, they wanted to put fiber in the right of way, and of course, then there's other businesses in town. I mean, generally speaking, that's what's driving this, these type of franchises anymore is, high-speed fiber network system. That's really what's driving it. And economically, right, the drive is commercial more than residential. That's just the economy, so.
Two questions. Have they given any kind of a construction timeframe or plan?
Not at this point, no. They've not submitted a specific project to us because they, we wouldn't even consider it until we had the franchise agreement. I mean, basically was, if they'd come in three months ago and said, we want to put this in, you know, we need to build from here to here, and we want to put a fiber network in to connect these businesses to buildings, our answer would be no. You can only go get your own private, right? I mean, if I want to come get an easement across your land, I can come to you and say, can I have an easement across your land? And for that, the city can't really control that. But once they leave that point, they got to hit the right of way something, they got to connect the whole place of, so.
The other thing is, is there a prescribed or preset reduction in these franchise fees? I hear lovely people in Washington, DC.
You mean, will they decrease for telecommunications? Right now, to my knowledge, no, they're not really looking at telecommunications. It's all wireless providers and wireless infrastructure providers that is the big issue now, where they are taking away a lot of the local control regarding these types of agreements.
But generally speaking, I think the point is that from a local control issue. I mean, I remember, you know, 25, 30 years ago, KTV, I mean, you had lots of, lots of local control on them, and now, for the most part, have none. So, and clearly, I think all of it all follows the legislatures. I mean, there've been little bits here and there about, well, you know, why does the city have any right to control its own public rights away? I mean, and there's certainly been chipping away at those things, you know. Again, right now, I think we're pretty, you know, we're safe, and that's what this franchise agreement really does, and it's much for the protection of the city and the community and the citizens.
Is it fairly competitive with other franchise agreements that you've seen in Edwardsville? Oh, absolutely. Being able to have a franchise application fee so that you can recoup the cost that comes from looking at franchises and permits and things like that is something that, you know, you certainly didn't want to miss out on. Having the franchise application to get more information about their company and what their intention is, sometimes contacts with these companies can be very dicey. In fact, just today, I finally got the contact for AT&amp;T. So they revolve, like, they change all the time. So it helps us, you know, get a little bit more of a handle on it, but this is very much in line with this area city. We're not out of line in any way, shape, or form. We think it's nothing that Edwardsville do to have this rather than to give them that access. Sure, I mean, it's, it's just part of developing the city. There's also, I know that MCI Metro, there, if there's any interest in the city in putting their own fiber along there, work that they're doing, I know that those are always options. I know Shawnee was going to look at that a little bit with MCI Metro and see if that was something that was beneficial. So, you know, you can work in conjunction with them to benefit the city also. They've been pretty straightforward to deal with, I can tell you that much, so I appreciate that.
I guess I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number 1013.
Second. It has been moved in second to approve ordinance number 1013. Would the clerk please call roll?
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stike?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Thank you for having more questions.
Next item will be consider a recommendation from Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to issue a request for proposal, RFP, for Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Mr. Stike?
Mayor and members of council, it was before you, is recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to issue a request for proposal for a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is considering moving forward with this plan since, really since they've been kind of reform over the last year and a half. It was kind of driven by the fact that we've been putting more and more resources into our parks and facilities and infrastructures with the trail, our footsall courts, the book golf, the disc golf courts. So along with that, and the changes that we're seeing in this large participation in our park programming, we kind of wanted to be a little bit more strategic in how we plan for park infrastructure and, you know, public places as a whole moving forward. So in 2008, the city had, or had put together a, a master plan for the park, but that was mostly for the existing city park, and mostly focused on logistical needs for that park. Wasn't really involved in recreation or any of the programming that we do. So what this plan is calling for is a strategic look at the existing city parks, in the city park and the riverfront park, as well as the park programming that's currently going on and a potential programming that maybe we want to look at. It would incorporate some of the other plans that we've done in the past. We've had some good data that came out of our, obviously, our comprehensive plan and our facility studies related to, you know. comprehensive plan and our facility studies related to, you know, upcoming demographic changes that we need to be aware of that would be of benefit to the park. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board looked at a couple of different examples of different RFPs that the community's put out, and kind of kicked those around and put together the draft document that's included in your packet tonight. At the last meeting that they, that they recommended moving forward with this plan for, to this group, they had specifically requested that we add in language related to lighting, signage, and then some kind of phased implementation approach for the recommendations coming out of the plan. Specifically, the suggested items that we want to see in our, what would be the final document, would be some aspect of public input, an analysis of demographic trends driving programming and facility needs, a side analysis of current and potential public spaces, a need assessment for programming and facilities, and review of possible financial implementation strategies of whatever comes out of the plan. The, uh, sales tax, or the special sales tax fund includes twenty-five thousand dollars for, uh, to commission this plan, and if it's approved tonight, the timeline would work where we would advertise the RFP for the next month. We would put together kind of an interview panel similar to what we did with the comprehensive or the, excuse me, the facility study, and interview the applicants sometime mid-January, bring that suggestion back to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, who would make a suggestion and then ultimately go back to the city council for final approval. So that puts this right around the end of the first quarter, hopefully. So if you've got more specific questions, I'll give you the answers.
If you weren't to use the twenty-five thousand, like, that full budget, would that benefit the parks in any way, so they could use it for actual materials?
We could, I mean, the special sales tax is here, much specifically for, you know, an aspect of that for Parks and Recreation purposes. I don't, the reason that I included the twenty-five thousand dollars in here in there is because, so, if you look at some of the other pure, other communities that gone after studies like that, the, these plans are often scalable, so we didn't want to not include a price and get a hundred thousand dollar, uh, plan when we only had twenty-five thousand dollars to spend. So, I mean, to answer your question, money not spent for this specifically could be used for other park needs. I don't expect applicants to, to be coming less than twenty-five thousand.
The, the reason I ask, and this might not be something that you can do at this time, but, um, and to keep guys took a few classes, and one of them, um, I thought was really a neat idea, and that's partnering with local colleges and students that will be doing this eventually one day and making plans in engineering and, and that aspect where they'll partner with the community, and this could be part of their degree, degree program, where we pay a nominal amount, um, for working with them, and I think it would save a lot of money. That's why I asked if, if that would benefit them. I didn't want to just take it out of.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond to that. I, I'm, I'm on the Wanda County Parks Board, and they have attempted that. It has not been very successful. I mean, there has been, it has been more project-specific rather than a general master plan. Um, that's not saying that it can't happen, but so far, uh, what I've seen, it's not been that successful. And I know you probably found that out at, at LKM, and that.
Yeah, they have pretty successful, working in, in smaller communities with.
Yeah, again, some, some smaller communities do.
And I feel like we're more in that smaller house, but Wanda County is a huge, and I think a lot gets diluted in the whole county, but I appreciate that, that.
And I think it probably is, during that thirty-day advertising period we're had, I mean, we could certainly reach out to, to KU or whoever.
The groups that I saw was from KU, and I can't remember the guy's name, but, um, there again, it was, um, it was not a, it was not necessarily a master plan like this, but it was for some certain projects, so.
And we probably administered schools in the state, certainly in the area, that we could, we could definitely reach out to.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I just want to be cautious that sometimes they don't work out.
Yeah, I think one of the, you know, some of the, the university programs have, you know, generally it's out of their architectural program is where park planners, you know, people that are going into landscape architecture and things like that. And sometimes they'll partner up maybe with a, with a professional firm, and they'll use the students to help. So they, they got a professional, right, that's been doing this, and then they partner up with students, uh, in that, or sometimes the professors themselves are, you know, they're, they're, that's what they do. They're architects, right? They teach at the university rain tip architecture, so we'll reach out to all of them.
Where, where the Wanda County Parks, uh, Department was successful, and it somewhat was a, a specific project of putting exercise stations in certain parks, not all the parks, but they, but it was limited to like one or two parks, that they, that they worked with that group of college students that, that, uh, they not only helped design it, but they even helped some of the construction.
Yeah, with, with, I mean, similar in this, in this topic, what, what may be kind of a viable option is with the recommendations that we get from a plan, specific recommendations on this programming or that facility, using area colleges to partner with them for implementation on aspects of the plan, rather than putting together the plan as a whole, giving the option out in the line.
If you, if you choose to go that way, let me know, and I will contact the Parks Department and see who, who they're contacting with, whether it's KU.
Are there any, you know, junior college programs locally, either here in KCK or Johnson County that?
I'm not sure what they're, I mean, I don't know.
I'm not aware. We can, we can do that.
Well, we, I mean, we'll, we want to try to get it out there broadly, and, and I mean, again, if, if we can do it for last, we're certainly not gonna just say, "Oh, well, you know, let's do it." But I, I mean, I think that part of the role of Parks Board is to help get these in, weigh, you know, weigh these. Again, our, our purchasing procedures and because it's using special parks, that special sales tax, we put into our financial policies that we would bring these types of things to the council before we put RFPs out, before we spend those sales taxes. And essentially, you get more input into, into the process of using those dollars. Like, we go to the fire department, sometimes they've been fairly small dollars, but, you know, that fund was specifically set up as donor approved for specific things. We, you know, trying to keep transparent, we want to get that out there. I would say the other addition to the Park Master Plan, what they're, what they're valued with, that they're also a development tool, because as, if you have residential neighborhoods, right, there's always the question, do you put in these pocket parks or these small parks, or how many parks should you, how much park acreage should you add for a certain sized community? Or as you're building even big commercial projects, you know, a lot of places have a park, they'll have a park fee, right? So when property's platted or, or certain things, they'll tie a fee to that, because, you know, if you're building an apartment complex and it's got, you know, three hundred units in it and that's five hundred people, you know, do you, you know, you need to have some recreational activity for those people, just as if you had single-family homes. Uh, or people come into your city and stay in a hotel, but they want to, right, they want to get on the trail and go take a run. So how do you try to capture some of those revenue pieces? And how do you build it into your, your comprehensive plan? Because really, it is a segment of most comprehensive plans, or things like the Park Master Plan. What, you know, we're working on right now, our stormwater plan, right? Where's all of our storm structures? What size are they? What conditions are they? Because we can't come back to you and say, "Well, here's a way to spend these public dollars," by just guessing. So, you know, planning has been a key component of the council's strategy, is let's make sure when we're spending money, it's where spending it wisely. And oftentimes, it's hard to go, "Well, we're gonna spend this money on a plane when we can go out and do something." And, and I'm kind of more of the, like, to do stuff, but, but sometimes a few dollars spent is a lot better on the planning side, so.
Will this include our property on Ninety-Eighth Street at all?
Yes.
And it may be kind of nice, and I really like the idea. It may be kind of nice to put in that RFP that, you know, if possible, we'd, we'd like that inclusion of local students.
Yeah.
Because I said, you know, but, but greatly from a young thought process, I wonder if it'd be important in Parks and Rec for the future.
So what kind of firms really provide that, that type? What, what, who would bid for this? Like, we had our images and all of these.
They're generally gonna be architectural firms that specialize, so.
Kind of like what we do already.
Yeah, but you'll have firm, I mean, I think, you know, that, that they, architecture engineering firms, more from the architectural side, so land, land planning firms, right, that specialize in, in parks, or, you know, do park planning. So there's a number of companies out. Even the person that did our plan back in LA, uh, still does Park Master Plan. We just limited the scale in the past, because quite honestly, we didn't have much dollars to spend. And I would say, "Well, let's go do this, and let's go do this, and let's go do this," and one of the least, and, and it's been, it's been effective for what it was. It was, again, geared to one place, but we, you know, nobody thought about the riverfront park being a park with use, and we acquired additional land, is that, we built the trail, so some of those things were kind of, these are the things we'd like to do now.
You're kind of answering the question I was gonna ask. I was gonna say, hey, we spent twenty-five thousand on the facilities.
Roughly. I don't remember exactly, but I think that's not what it was.
It would be spending about the same. I was trying to figure if that was really, if it was that much of a cost on parks than it was for that full facilities plan, but I guess it's kind of sounded like it is, so.
And there may be some savings where, I mean, you know, again, we have data that we didn't have yet, right? And we certainly will make that available, but.
You understand what I'm saying, there on that, but I don't have a problem.
I, I think our purpose for the budget was simply to, again, I think the primary one was, if you just go out there and say, "We want a Park Master Plan for the whole city," you'll get crazy things. I mean, I was involved in one, uh, in a nearby city here, small city, you know, and they came back and they, they wrote the report, and literally fifty pages of, the report was, "How do you use parks to, to, you know, avoid gang violence?" Now, the park planner was from Chicago, was from Chicago, and it may have been very useful there, but this was a city that said, "We have residential housing, and we want to probably get a pocket park. We don't need, you know, that's not, that's not our goal," right? I mean, I mean, how do we keep our youth engaged in Parks and Recreation as a goal here? But that, you know, but it's not the same, so, you know, trying to make sure that when we put this out there, the responses we get are, are reasonable and, and again.
You're answering all the questions I was covering.
There's some great big firms out there that does this stuff, and we're not a great big firm quite.
Yeah, 'cause I was just looking at the twenty-five thousand. I thought, that's not much of what the whole of the city facility.
It may have been a little less.
I think, I think the facility says about thirty thousand, if I remember correctly, and that this is, yeah, this being the twenty-five thousand, but again, that's more than, you know, we need this signage here or that signage there.
When you put out an RFP, you're gonna, gonna put a price on it anyway.
Right.
That, that's internal.
Right.
I think Mr. Sack says.
I do. Couple, two, couple things. When, Jack, when you were, uh, introducing this here, you said something, you said, uh, taking into consideration, you have incoming, uh, demographic changes. What did you mean?
So when we did the, uh, the study of the Fortin K thirty-two border, one of the surprises that I saw, not really surprising, but kind of likely things that we, that came out of it, they gave us a demographic study for that, you know, related to how demographics in Edwardsville are gonna guide that development of Fortin K thirty-two. And one of them was showing that we are the two fastest-growing age groups in Edwardsville, or kind of that, you know, upper twenties, the lower thirties, kind of, so, uh, younger adults with young families, and then sixty-five and older. So pulling in, you know, that kind of demographic trends that have already been uncovered in some of our other studies, is really maybe doing some other, uh, analysis of that to kind of win a win a little bit more on that. We don't want to design parks and public spaces for a group of people who, where the studies don't show that they're going to be, you know, making up the population.
I agree that this is about economic development. Would it make more sense to take the twenty-five thousand out of economic development funds, leaving the twenty-five thousand in Parks and Rec to spend more directly on equipment and that type of thing?
It probably, I mean, I mean, the way that fund is set up, it's, it's relatively discretionary that, you know, I mean, it has to have a tie to, obviously, economic development, which, but, but that's our determination, or.
Right.
We didn't split the money even, so.
Yeah, procedurally, it would probably still, no matter where the money came from, we would probably still bring this back to the park board so they can weigh in on it and get their recommendations to, you know, anyway. And that's, that's prescribed to special, in our financial policy as part of expenditures out of the special sales tax fund, so the process is gonna work the same either way, but we can, we can work on.
Maybe I can take a look at that and keep as much in the park fund that would actually be physically used by the citizens.
Well, I think that's, and that's one of the questions. And Chuck, you said property on Ninety-Eighth Street. What property?
Um, it's where the shooting ring is.
And this would take into consideration that property?
Well, it's, I mean, it, it, it could. I mean, because it could potentially be used for some kind of, I mean, the way it currently is, and I know there's other issues, but the, the way it's deeded right now, it has to be used for public purpose.
Got you. Okay.
Right.
I was, I was clear on what.
Be a nice place for a park or?
Parking. It would be a natural.
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, here's an example.
Take a mini Shawnee.
And then, so, I think, and we all are kind of saying that a little bit, it's hard for me to spend twenty-five thousand dollars when I know there's things where you could put that twenty-five thousand dollars in that would directly affect the park today.
Right.
That's where, you know, and I think that's where, what, what you were saying, that I want to do, I want to do now with what we got, twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, whether it's lights or, and not that I'm opposed to planning and having, uh, a plan moving forward, uh, because we've already demonstrated tonight, fast and all, of the things that, planning ahead, how that helps us. Um, so I'm not opposed to it. I just, it's kind of like the facilities study that we did. They came back, I'm not saying that it was a waste, but there was a whole lot of stuff that frankly, we're never gonna be able to do.
Long, long-term.
I mean, and I don't, I'm hoping that this doesn't go that same way. "Well, you can," you know, and then it turned out to something where you go, "Well, here's, that twenty-five thousand went to, you know, a nice presentation that we got that we can look at and hope that we're still need twenty-five thousand dollars to go put lights in the park," and, or more, or money to be used that would directly affect our citizens today.
Right.
So I like the idea, like what you said, uh, using, trying to figure out how that money doesn't come. I mean, it's kind of like taking it from one of the pages to the other, you know, do you take money out of your left pocket to your right pocket?
We wouldn't use the economic development funds for buying a jungle gym. So that's kind of like doing.
Yeah. But I, I also would like to, the, I mean, I totally agree with using some folks that, um, that are looking to get their internship or their, um, final on, on a project. You know, I think, um, that's kind of things that, and I think the mayor and even Louie that, or Carolyn's mind said, that small towns have had great success in, in doing this. And so I'm not, again, I'm not opposed to it. I just would like to see that that twenty-five thousand dollars make an, an impact.
I, and I find it, so, two things. I mean, one, just because we sent it on this plan, I mean, we won't be making, can't make other things during the process and won't spend money on other parks thing. I think, you know, one thing, so what do we do for senior citizens today? Right? And we've done a little bit, like our library that, that while I was at Jack, that, right, you know, we got this little library checkout thing. So I, I don't think one means that we're giving up one for the other. And, and the second thing is, I think tonight, really, that's what we earmarked in the budget, but what we're really looking at tonight is the issuance of an RFP for a park master plan. That, that's fundamentally.
Will we have to say money on it? Can we just ask for that?
Because we may, we may.
Can you come back and say, "This company can do this."
You might have to come back in at thirty thousand, let's say, and you go, "Man, that's really what I want." Or maybe one comes in at fifteen thousand.
Well, I'm curious with the group that we've already paid twenty-five thousand dollars, do they do that? And?
They, they probably do, or probably.
And maybe we, they have done enough of the legwork already.
Very well.
That we, maybe back when we had the facility study, I mean, we may have attacked this all there, I don't know. But coming back, they may have already done enough of, they know what we, we are.
Right.
Can you, if you're Grant, could you, uh, tell us, give us a, you know, I don't know, I'm just throwing that number out.
And I think what, I, I think what the RFP does, though, it, it lays out, and I think the elements are exactly what you, what you want, right? I mean, you definitely want to have public input into this process, or, you know, not parks specifically. And we have a lot of the demographics, but the demographics are telling. And we have a lot of the demographics, but if demographics are telling us that we have a growing senior population, then what are we doing providing? We don't have a senior citizen, do you want a senior center or is a program that we can do? You know, so how do we use that sites? I mean, even when we looked at the, the old park plan, right? So that plan assumed that we would turn all of the city park into baseball fields, right? It could still be that way, but now where you hold your soccer program, right? You gotta, you gotta a piece of land that basically needs to be fairly level, right? And there's not a lot of lovely land, yeah, there's not a lot of lovely pieces of land.
Better with the.
Right. Uh, and, and so I, I, I think it can be, I, I don't, I mean, I, I, I think that these pieces, whether, whether it's arc images can come in and say, hey, you know what? We've got a leg up here because we've already got, we already have enough information. So we'll come back proposal to do all this work for X dollars versus some company that's never done business with us at all and says, hey, I can.
Send out a bid.
Huh, yeah, these are requests for proposals, so they'll have to come back through the same process.
Big work, right.
Right, and, and ultimately give us a price. At that point is the decision of.
We're not spending any money tonight.
We're not spending any, any avenues.
Cost.
What it would cost us.
So in the meanwhile, while, are we going to pursue avenues of, just, are we gonna reach out to some? Sure, you may come back and we find out, hey, you know, we found somebody and we can scrap the whole RFP bid process, you know?
Right, and it's built into the, into the document that this is, us putting it out there is no guarantee that anybody's gonna get anything. It's just putting it out.
I mean, we'll send, we can send it to the KU school of arc extension.
I'm busy with arc extension. I think that's in that case, which, I don't know, which state has a.
I, I don't know, I mean.
And also doing those, to, to your earlier point, you know, in, we, in the adopted budget, there is, this money as well as about $15,000 in earmarked for park purposes, because we had, we've been on a good streak of putting resources steadily towards the park. I mean, just in the footsall, the trail and, and disc golf, as there's one that's close to $50,000 worth of investment that we put in the park over the last, you know, two, two and a half years. So we've, we've, before we get too far down the line, you know, putting this attraction here, this amenity here, we want to have some, you know, some parameters kind of put on us, and sometimes outside eyes that are looking at different data sets that we're not considering sometimes might help strategically move us forward. So also about $15,000 in the special sales tax fund earmarked in 2019, adopted budget for, I think, for some park purpose, and it may be delivered at Riverfront Park or it may be, you know, something. So we're still wanting to continue the momentum of where we're putting resources into the parks. This is just more of a long-term, you know, if we find a firm that we are comfortable moving forward with, a long-term strategy to help us realize with respect to everything else going on that affects parks and park programming and public spaces to help to kind of.
Well, I agree, parks are work, and you know what? People need those places to go and download and relax and, I mean, I'm all, I, I like that. I mean, I have no issues with that at all. So I'm gonna throw this out there now, where are we at on lighting for the parks?
So that was discussed specifically at the, at the Parks Recreation Advisory Report, that that aspect be included in this plan to see if it's something that, if it's something that we want to pursue for the footsall course or, or any other amenities we have going on at the, at the, at our parks.
And I think that's kind of, kind of my issue, and I, I don't know that I need somebody telling me, I don't need to go spend money to, for somebody to tell me we need lights on a court. I mean, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
I don't need somebody to tell me to buy mirrors, put in my refrigerator.
I don't think that's what this, this is gonna do, just to tell us we need lights on. This is more about a master plan for the future, not just add lights on a court and, and.
But if you put lights on court, I, I think, so I put lights in a court, why would I put lights on court? Because I want people to use the court at hours other than light at hours, right? But is there enough people, are there people that are gonna use it if you spend $30,000 to put lights in the court? Then are you gonna have people come and use it? Or are we just putting lights on court and have lights on court? I mean, those are the kind of debates, questions that, you know, so if we, if the public comes and says, man, if we just had more lighted facilities, the footsall court, make, make, basketball, so, so what's the purpose of lighting the court? Obviously, so the court can get more hours of use, but if we're not getting much use, is that gonna help us get more use? And then, of course, that has a cost, right? And when people using whatever facility is, right, it has costs associated. So I got the lighting, I turn it on, we pay electricity, wear and tear, those aren't bad buddies. But you don't want to spend all that money in good drive by day and the court's empty every night, but I love it.
And not to, not to go to.
And I'm just, that one is an example, I think there's, do you do the same thing, you know?
I mean, so we're not.
I have.
Lights is what we're saying.
We're not lighting.
I'm just saying, you know.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we have gotten policies and it's on that. And because we've been, anecdotally, not to go down too far down the lighting, you know, I thought you were too far off this topic, but anecdotally, I would say if we needed more lights over at the same bars, probably around the disc golf course. Like I, I see, when I'm down there, I see more people using the disc golf course, you know, more often than I'm seeing. I mean, both are getting used, but as far as consistency goes.
And then, for example, it's kind of like what I'm saying, you, you see it, and we didn't, and we didn't pay nobody.
Right, sure, sure, sure.
You see that where that's needed, where I maybe, I don't know, you know, at night or not, I'm not sure.
I don't know, I'm not saying that's where it's needed.
People that we already have that can say, hey, this is what we got. And so we're not spending any money tonight, I get it. I make a motion that we move forward with whatever that even says. Recommendation of the Parks Rec to issue RFP, and do we need to put in there that it not exceed 25,000? Or are we putting a dollar amount in?
I think we need to not put a dollar amount in it, I think that.
I, I mean, it'll have to come back to you, I mean, I think that's our budget, right? That's our.
Yeah, because I think if you put 25,000, they're gonna try to hit 23,642 dollars. But we may come back for something that says 122,000 dollars.
Right, that's what we, and, and you're quite honestly, we don't want to waste their time or our time. We're sending it out to, you know, ABC Master Park Management Company out of Chicago, Illinois. It's gonna, it's gonna cost you $10,000 for them to bring that whole team down here to have a one-day meeting. But if you just put it out there, you'll, you'll get those.
Right, sure.
Or get, right, we're not KCK or KCB.
I, I really don't think we ought to put a price in there just to keep from, like you say, you know, they're coming in.
75,000. Maybe go for 75,000.
Right, again, you, I mean, you have, I mean, the, the folks from Arc Images, right? The folks that, that team got put together with VAC Roads, right? I mean, they, we're gonna reach out to those people because quite honestly, they do have some of the resources, right? Ready, right, right? So to them, it's able to recapture some of the costs, you know, their other studies on a little bit, right?
Well, second, the motion, and make a comment, I would really like for us to reach out to the grade school for that public meeting, reach out really hard.
Right.
And, and trying to get their parents and kids in here during these public meetings, so we can hear from the people that would be potentially using it.
Uh, so part of it will be, like I mentioned, the, the kind of interview panel aspect out there, which we see as that's a viable option, including somebody coming to that elementary school or school district as part of that interview panel.
Do you do surveys, I mean, online surveys?
Something hot shot.
Well, we used the online surveying when we did the K-32's, we actually did some photos, and, and we got excellent response to that. Good and bad, I mean, but, but we got excellent responses, and we got responses that weren't necessarily citizens, but yet they're here every day, they're, you know, and most of our park users are not, right? When you look at our soccer program, most of those kids are not Edwardsville residents. Right, probably two thirds of them are not from our city. So we need to make sure we're looking at the audience out there, but.
We had a question for the question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. The motion, the second, to approve the RFP process for Parks Recreation Master Plan. Would the clerk please call roll?
K R?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Axe?
Yes.
Axe?
Yes.
Thank you all, good input.
And then also I'd like to connect with the hot shot, and then also that Thiblo Toff, which out there is kind of, kind of cool.
Okay, next item is Consider Resolution 2018-26 authorizing the Edwardsville Fire Department to participate in the State of Kansas Wildland and Fire Task Force Program and approving the execution of an agreement with the Kansas Office of State Fire Marshal.
Mayor, council members, before you lie, to see his resolution 2018-26 authorizing Edwardsville Fire Department to participate in a joint venture which is identified under the Kansas Home Department of Homeland Security Area Three, which is Windock County and Johnson County Fire Departments creating a wildland task force. This is coming due, due to the recent fire qualifiers that state has experienced in the last three years. They have a severe shortage of forestry firefighting assets in the state of Kansas. This is a voluntary, it takes first participation with then our agency as well as the Kansas City, Kansas Department and Windock County and six other agencies in Johnson County. No agency alone has either kind of picked one asset and created this task force. And chiefs of both counties decided that our best committee that we could do in the metos combine resources to face this potential deployment factor that we have. So we have, like I said, us in Kansas City, Kansas and Windock County, six other of our joint ventures in Johnson County, following Johnson County's emergency management curfew under State District, or Homeland Security District Number Three. It is a, this is a participation or a voluntary deployment if necessary activated by the Kansas Department of, or Kansas State Fire Marshal's Office for request for interstate deployment only. We reiterate that again, we are not going to deploy resources from our agency outside of this state for any type of wildfire assets. And also our deployment factor for this task force is 72 hours if we send our personnel. This is managed by us, we cannot accomplish act or actor, just as any other mutual request, we simply said we cannot accomplish it and then keep on moving down even the aspect. So us locking into this mutual agreement does not mean that every time they call for a wildland that's down in Rice or Buckle or, or counties, down in the far southwest region of the state that we are automatically deploying. All the chiefs will sit there and have a conference call, those that can sit there and meet the requirements for the request of the state will fill the bill. Those that won't will be left back behind, you know, fill in the vacancies from deployed assets and resources. Uh, we would have some cost occurrence if we had deployment, such as our wages, drinking water, meal allotment for the travel time that are down there. However, most of that can be covered by the IAN here, this may be on site. Uh, we do not have any other additional occurrence costs, um, such as technically putting our tools that we've already bought back here within the city. Some of that is granted back to us from the forestry this year. So there's, you know, zero cost to this mutual agreement as it is, as it sets forward. I know when the package was the draft of the wildland agreement itself, I think it was very clearly not mined by the office of the state fire marshal to do the voluntary participation issue. Uh, myself, Mr. Webb, have discussed, we are not going to send any resource or asset from Edwardsville outside of the state at any given time for a frag deployment for anything out west, like we're saying in California. If you have any questions about the task force or anything like that, I'm glad to answer them, but it's pretty much a simple mutual agreement, good call. Luke Johnson County will deploy, David over in Johnson County will deploy from there. Our resources will be gone on Saturday to about 96 hours before we might see them back here. You'll be predominantly either our brush truck or your truck, two guys, or myself or Tony as a task force strike engineer. We'll be, uh, the brush truck back, it'll be only one of those two assets we send out. We've never sent an engine kind of to pull more people that will fall under D K C J or, uh, Johnson County for that part of the question.
Do they, oh, good.
Great, thank you, ready to make motion.
Yeah.
I, I guess.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, we, do we have to spend any money getting our equipment to the requirements in this document?
No, for the last three years, we've been doing that automatically already. Um, when we replaced the old brush truck two years ago, we went ahead and actually surpassed the departments when we bought the multipurpose vehicle for our own asset here. When we bought the wildland brush gear, um, through the state forestry grant, they gave us 50% back. It was already upgraded, all the loose equipment we've already had and, and had for a long period of time. Um, we've got just another aspect of our normal budget process this year that's covered, it'll be another 50% reimbursement back to the state forest departments. There's nothing there we had to sit there and specialize and go out and buy.
Will there be training for the?
The captains, the captains and the drivers already did the first half of training this year when we sent them up to Tonga and Oxy. We're gonna do the back half of the department later on this year. And we're trying to host it right now, the problem is, is training forestry inherent to teach it. Uh, this requirement has created a problem that the foresters not have enough instructors to get out and provide all the training required. Uh, I know we have another meeting tomorrow over in Alata with, again, we're talking about trying to get the, the fire departments together over on Johnson County. We'll try to host one or two more training sites in the spring for next year. Uh, we have about half of our departments trained already to that entire level, uh, excuse me, and then the other half, pretty much as the firemen, um, are still being, the lack at the back half of training for it.
Well, basically, if they would call for assistance, it would be the brush truck and two fire personnel.
Depends upon, it'd either be that request or it'd be either myself or Tony to go and represent as a strike force, task force leader, and then our brush truck will stay back if you want to do that side.
And then the pay and overtime, that we, we cobble that up for.
Yes, unless it goes to a statewide declared disaster, then you may see some reimbursement of about 75% come back from the state, which would have to go on to a program for declared disaster, just as any other female declared disaster. We may see such as a snowstorm or as a, or a, or a, or a, or a severe weather, you know, we, each part of that. Uh, we have talked to a lot of our park timers and our volunteers as well that have also committed to sit there and say they're gonna cover part of that as well too, so we may not have as much of a overhead cost to put in true fact.
Did they give any kind of, um, if we would have been in this last year, let's just say last five years, how many times would we have been deployed?
Uh, Ludmore County's gone twice, I suppose.
In the last?
Two years they had.
Perfect. Um, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-26 authorizing Edwardsville Fire Departments to participate in the State of Kansas Wildland and Fire Task Force Program and approving the execution of the agreement with the Kansas Office of State Fire Marshal.
Second.
It has been moved and second to adopt Resolution 2018-26, I will not read the rest of that, would the clerk please call roll?
K R?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Seitz?
Yes.
Axe?
Yes.
Next item is Consider Resolution 218-27, Establishing a Legislative Agenda for 2019.
Uh, each year we have brought this to the city council, uh, to have a legislative agenda. And typically what we have done is adopt the LTM's legislative agenda versus trying to create our own legislative agenda and pick and choose. Really what this does from a staff level a, as well as the council level, all throughout the legislative session, we'll get requests for, you know, something's coming up, can you send a letter of support, opposition, or give testimony or things like that? This just really gives us that position to say, you know, yes, we can do that because the council's aware of our activities that, you know, we're doing this would concern the council, we're not just, Mike Webb's not out there, the city manager, you know, going and making testimony on something and somebody says, well, why didn't you go testify? That's not really what we thought our lead or, you know, our process was. So we use this as our guideline, and that has been our standard for a number of years. And we recommend adoption of the Resolution 2018-27, same for the 2019 legislative agenda.
Mayor, make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-27, Establishing a Legislative Agenda for 2019. It has been moved and second to adopt Resolution 2018-27, Establishing a Legislative Agenda for 2019, would the clerk please call roll?
K R?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Seitz?
Yes.
Axe?
Yes.
Good.
I would like to point out, out, that on page 21 of that, there was mentioning Riverfront Park, so maybe asking for some federal funding on that.
Federal funding, no, no, federal funding and also to reduce the amount of, uh, I don't know the right word, bureaucracy in order to make that happen as well. It's a very leaky box.
That's why I say I'm just gonna bring this point up and then I'm gonna stop.
I think probably that was driven by the city of Chalky over one of the ones they did recently. I know they, that that's kind of what happened.
Any advisory course, Mike?
Uh, you know, mayor, I really have nothing other than I will be at the KACN, which is the city manager, KMC, the conference here, uh, Wednesday through Friday. Be back Friday after eight. I'd be with this as well.
You got any?
Jack may have some.
Uh, do, just a reminder, a couple of dates, we do have the mayor's tree legs here, only coming up on November 27th, and that's two days.
coming up on November 27th, and that's Tuesday. We usually start at 6 o'clock, and then the holiday staff luncheon will be December 14th at 11:30. We usually do that in the community center.
What do you see on the tree lighting?
6 o'clock.
Chief, with me.
Thank you. Weather event, we had about less handful of vehicle accidents. There was a bus accident, a school bus, not related to the weather, it was related to somebody missing a red light. Continue to be busy, it's a year-end stuff. We'll have the next 30 days for employee evaluations. We'll be wrapping up, we start about the 15th of November and wrap that up about mid-December, get that out of the way. Just busy, 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 some search warrants, a lot of drug activities that we've been just really going after. As of today, we hit 720 in our routes, which is, we're setting records in every category that we're involved in. So it's been a very busy year, three years in a row, it's been fairly historic for us. So just going out there and taking care of business, our guys work hard, they're working long hours, and then again, here and there in the cold, you know, it's snowing and everything else. So they've did a real good job, but I think we, of those accidents, I think we just had one, maybe a minor injury or so. And the roads were actually pretty good, you know, overall. We always had some spots in the past that would ice over before any other and since some changing in the roads, they got right on them and successfully cleared up some of our accidents that we used to work in the past, and we have this first snow, so going through the loop.
Chief, keep with him.
As everybody knows, we saved McDonald's in Barren Springs.
You did?
First one that I've not put on the ground, out of all the jurisdictions I've had McDonald's parked, I've not put it on the ground, so it's a testament to the automatic engagement with us in Barren Springs that we're running back and forth on each side. Barren Springs is back over here again Saturday, maybe hours in the morning again with us. It's a very important relationship in both cities. If you're not aware of it, it's been going on for a go over a year, year and a half now. It's a very streamlined operation. The McDonald's incident proved where we can take a fireman from Barren Springs and there's definitely a fireman from Edwardsville who are on St. Pose line and have seamless operations with Edwardsville Fire Chief from Barren Springs. We also have times that have Barren Springs Fire Chief running operations here in Edwardsville. So there are times people sit there and call and say, why did I see an Edwardsville fire truck and a Barren Springs fire? And as long as we're up there, it's a very good operation and seems to be working real well for both communities and both sides and sectors. So unfortunately, like I said, I did save the McDonald's, like I said, my wife sat there and called and said, you didn't put this on the ground, it's the first time we got that. I'm saving one, so. You will see at times, we have some red helmeted, oddball kids that look like they're just fumbling around, seeing those are our Johnson County recruits that are riding along with us. They've worked out so well with that several that have come back from multiple ride-alongs. December the 4th, we have a presentation of the recruit class trying to pick up some more volunteering part-time dudes out of this program. Took us about three years to get an improved ride-along facility for them, a team for them. The school has asked back Dr. Thomas to come in, it's given us a new avenue to sit there and talk to 24 recruits at times. So I'm hoping that maybe we get three or four that have already expressed interest to come in and help out in Edwardsville, because like we did in the GHS, it's a different program. We run a different volunteer basis because it's not the traditional whistle goes up and everybody shows up with the fire, so it's kind of work to shift rotation. So myself and Mr. Burr will be over there the night of December the 4th, sell them why they keep coming out and work for us here in Edwardsville. Mark the calendar, prepare the cruiser, prepare the fire trucks, Saturday, December the 15th. Different timeframe, we're actually going to go for an 11 o'clock brunch, I mean, instead of the traditional 8:30 in the morning. I've got a conflict that one is going on, so that'll be 11 o'clock at the community room at IRP Distribution Center down there on 28th Street. Now that'd be the time to feed everybody and then we'll start distributing items out from there. So then start to pack them and really start to send. The quilt is about 45 days away from final delivery. I would be in Old Louisiana along with two others, the 18th, 15th, and 20th of December, do the final inspection on that, keep it at brightest. It'll be delivered to Springfield shortly after Christmas and appear shortly after the first of the year. Is moving right along, back body is built on the frame and chassis now, so it's running into no major problems that are going along with it. And then Mr. Webb was advising this a couple of weeks ago, effective Thursday morning, about the next three weeks or so, Mr. Burr, we run the fire department, they're going to go give me the Ginsu treatment on my ankle and foot. So I will see how well healthcare system works in the VA system. But he will have the control of fire departments. If you have any questions or concerns, he will be the one to make contact with. Mr. Webb has his contact information, but he will run the park control. It's fine. I was sitting there and turned the phone off for at least the first couple of days, was I will be probably pretty honoring off paint, so other than that, it's all down.
Chief, thank you. Public Works, Danny.
Well, we are busy as well, so I'll just give you a recap of the working that we've got going on. We're wrapping up our projects for this year. We still have that flow meter project down on Wood End that really hasn't come online yet, doing the back order of parts and working with the NIP government, EVU, and the electrician. We're hoping to get that going by the end of this week, so that project will be wrapped up. We also have a 218 street maintenance project. We still have about a half dozen patches. Talked to the contractor today, we're just waiting for some good weather, so hopefully we can get that in before Thanksgiving next week and get that done. If not, it'll probably be in the next, by December 1st, hopefully we'll get that done. Our trail project has been done, as you know, probably four months. Contractor has yet to fill us, gave us an invoice on that, so that one's still outstanding. I know, right? That money's sitting there, so we're still wrapping that up. I'm still working with the contractor to do the crosser pipe overview that's failed on the east side of Edwardsville Drive, north of Speaker Road. We have a failed reinforced concrete box, so we're going to get that patched before we lose the section of Edwardsville Drive. Then we're also getting ready to kick off a stormwater inventory on all of our stormwater structures. Just so you know, we have an estimated about 300 different structures across our pipe, curb inlets, area inlets, so hopefully next spring, we'll have all that data back. We'll know really what our infrastructure is out there, how many crosser pipes, how many curb inlets, we're going to have all that data, we're going to know what's failed, what needs to be repaired. It'll probably be a shock because one of the great things about this year is we use a new tracker that we bought and cleared some of the right-of-way, but now we're just finding all kinds of issues. Maybe even now we have a property that responds, say, oh my goodness, this is worth washing away. Well, it was fine, it wasn't fine before, but we couldn't see it. So, you know, there's going to be a lot of need probably that comes out next spring after December 1st. Also, with the program, hopefully once this all gets wrapped up, I'm going to go out and do our street ratings. But this year, I was probably about four or five years since they were doing any analysis on our payments, so I'm going to do that myself if anything else gets wrapped up. And again, as she said, snow season's kicked off, and this is actually our site that's in trouble. We know that we actually worked last week too, so our guys are working, gently doing all that as well as doing right-of-way maintenance. This is just a little bit about the snow program. Just from the perspective, I think I mentioned previously that in the years passed, we contracted that lookout and last two years, this is our third year doing it in-house with our own crews. So two years ago, we had six events. Last year, we had 13 events. So we're hoping for a much lighter year this year. And I know we get a lot of snow, but, you know, the ice and it's late, that's just, that's more treacherous than snow. So, you know, just so you know, that, you know, our guys and yells are out there working, you know, prepping for that, working those hours, cleaning up after it, so it's only through this process that they're really working on to get the streets safe for them.
I've got a couple of questions. Is dirt work still available if we?
You know, he's pretty much out of the business. However, he did say he does have a truck up there, so if we get a large snow event, he'll come and plow for us, but he's out of the tree business. And that's really what we need, because now, you know, thanks to our budget cycles the last couple of years, you know, we do have two good trucks and two new spreaders and plows, and we're fully staffed and a bundle of works, and thanks to the fire department there, our backup, you know, a couple of the guys over there backed up with us the last couple of years, have gotten our plows with us put up. And then we actually have an old field shed that is our third vehicle, so we only run two vehicles, and so we have a third backup. So I'm pretty confident what we will find during the house.
And we just add to public works in this, so the inventory we're doing on stormwater, besides being good so we know what's there, it's also basically required under our stormwater management program. So as a city federally, we have certain stormwater requirements that we have to maintain. And so part of this is that, which quite honestly, we should have had probably done it two, three years ago for compliance. So, you know, it's compliance, I it was not just, this would be really nice, but it does give us some information on how we move forward, whether we want to implement a stormwater management fee. A lot of cities have that, where you have now, we have requirements for doing certain stormwater work, how you pay for it, those kind of things. So that's valuable. The other thing, the Kansas Avenue project was officially closed, so the state has to get, the federal highway administration has to officially close a project. They did that, part of that project, they bought it, and they looked to say, okay, here's how much was spent, and city, you either owe us money or you get money back. We got back about $52,000. So effectively, we have to put it back to the bond program, but that lets us not have to transfer money maybe from the street fund or the economic development fund or the special sales that we have to figure that out. So we'll use that to pay down that debt, that payment that we have coming up, and keep that money back for the end of the year. So you don't get those very often, and so that's a, you know, $52,000. I expected, I thought we'd get a $2,000 back, I mean, $2,000 or $3,000, I'm certainly not expecting $52,000. So just wanted to add this to that.
Okay. Lisa?
Hi.
Okay, Jeff, where's starting with you?
I was out of town very much, so I don't know how the roads were, but I can make sure they were fine. I don't have anything.
Okay, you're good. Thank you. Margaret?
Public Works, right north of Williamson Farms, the second and 30th domain, going up 110th, that really looks nice how you.
It filled in down here.
Yes, it did. Those reflectors are so nice. We live here, we know it, but, you know, for people that it's dark, so that's very nice, very nice.
It won't last, but it's.
Well, you know, I lived the second day, it looked like somewhere.
You know, it's kids, they're, they have fun.
They're a drucker, you know. Couple with the 110th, what the heck happened there Sunday morning? Did somebody hit a pole? Close you up to I-70? I was on my way to church, I'm like, uh, everything was shut down, I had to turn around.
Yeah, Bambi got away, he went to swerve, and Bambi took out the telephone pole and the meters, so they had to dig up. He refrained the pole and then digged a grid point and the meters, so that's why.
Nobody got hurt, no?
No.
Bambi?
Nope, Bambi ran off the wood, so. Cool story, just went to swerve and boy, Bambi was out there, I still go on ball and basketball.
And probably the worst, most perilous, the Sunday before, what the heck, our power was out for like five hours in Williamson Farm. The whole cheese game. You don't know what happened?
I don't hear anything about it.
No. It was most of our neighborhood. No, I know. But anyway.
Everybody pay your bills, right?
Exactly. It's one of those things where.
I mean, normally we don't get calls, but.
Exactly, we have buried lines. It's probably the sixth time in 20 years our power's gone, and for that long, it's just not, so. Anyway, what's all that?
Here?
Listen, no, nothing. Good job, all of you. Thank you.
Carol?
Well, Happy World Kindness Day in Edwardsville, since this is official.
We should be kind every day.
Yes, especially in. I wanted to, and I know we've really hammered on this, but with the parks and recreation RFP, just so they understand, we're not, well, maybe, I can't speak for everyone, my intention isn't to give them less money to work with, I was just hoping to save money so they'd have more money for things you can see and things that our community can just use. And so I would just really love to see some, you know, us reach out to a couple of colleges' community groups and say, would you like to partner with us? It's a great opportunity for education, for people to learn about Edwardsville, but then for us to save some of those tax dollars to put in physical means in our community. So other than that, I did notice the roads were fantastic. Thank you, I have a teenage driver, and so I need a little bit help. And.
He's the one that ran over the reflector.
No, didn't.
She wondered what this curtain was on the side.
And I was wondering for the mayor's tree lighting, are we doing the Christmas thing in the rec center again, or is it just going to be the outside?
No, we'll do some kind of crap, okay, like a tree center.
Okay. And will we have, will you have volunteer opportunities for that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. If you would just keep me posted on that, I'd like to help out. And then in the future, and I know it's too soon right now, but I just thought it might be a great opportunity when we have public events like On Best or the Mayor's Christmas Tree Lighting, maybe just partnering with Bon Trent or somebody that people can give back to our community when we do free events for the public. We can collect stuff for like, you know, kids when on Christmas break that they can eat lunch at home and maybe they wouldn't otherwise have lunch to eat, or gloves or something like that, I just thought it could be a way to give back.
And we have that Bon Trent for free, we did a book drive one time, I don't know what we did last year.
Book drive, two years.
But we have that, but we need to bring our picture, we have that back.
Yeah, I'd love to see that.
On that street inventory, is it going to be the same rating system that we used in the past?
Yeah, yeah, that's our consistent.
Okay, great. So we'll be able to trip there apples to apples?
I did it for 15 years in Shiny, yes.
Okay, great. The house issue that we had this past summer, where I think it went to court, is that off the books now?
Over here on 7th.
Yeah. Is that?
I, you know.
It's no longer in court, they were fined, they, they're fined through court, and it's kind of, it's on a monthly checklist if we drive by and, you know, if it needs, if we reopen, we can reopen it.
So it's me, it's compliant at the present time?
It was compliant the last time it was looked at. How do I say that? And it's on a monthly review cycle, so it was the Friday the last day over there. So we have about eight to 10 properties that we review every month, and that's one of them.
With the Parks and Rec study, one of the things that's really been a safeguard over the last few years, and one of the reasons I'm in favor of this type of thing, although we need to be careful with it, is it eliminates pet projects and being accused of pet projects. And so it's really having a professional study saying, this is a long-term view of it, and this is kind of how to get the planning, a part A, part B, and they help to protect us as councilmen from looking like we're partial towards one thing or another, and we're planning, going on a master plan that makes sense and that everyone's accepting. So while it's, it's a lot of money, and I wish we could find a way to let some public works or Parks and Rec as possible, it's like the road inventory, it's like the sewer drainage inventories, it really gives us a baseline, so we're just not willy-nilly doing things, we're doing things with a purpose and in a proper order.
I have nothing further against to contribute, other than thank the council for the input we had tonight on this, on this process over the RFP. I think there was very good inputs from the council, so with that, we are adjourned.